May seventeen. Twenty twenty-three, four P M. H R and Legal. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to buy this alternative meeting format. In a citizen's effort to broaden public participation, please be patient as we make your technical difficulties during the meeting. Welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage. Commission comments, questions?
Mister Mayor.
Please.
Uh, next week, we are discussing the um, ARPA general fund savings allocation. Um. The mayor will not be able to be with us, so I would like to propose to the commission that we continue with the discussion on the twenty-fifth, but then hold off on making our final recommendation of what goes on the resolution for the following admin meeting when the mayor has a chance to review our, the meeting recording and um, then be part of, can participate in the final recommendation that goes on the resolution. So have the deliberations and the discussion as originally planned, but then hold off on the final recommendation of what goes on the resolution until the mayor returns.
I appreciate that. Okay.
Mister.
Yes, please.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I've just uh, I'd like to, um, sorry, hard to talk. I would like to get consensus from the commission to work with the city manager and the city attorney on the issue of looking into the permanent designation of La Grande Trail as an urban trail. Um, permanently designating it as such. Um, and to explore what, what we would need to do in order to do that. Um, I know it has come up a few times. It seems like an ongoing discussion. I've heard a lot from the community about concerns about that, but that piece of land. Um, so I think it would, I would like to see what our options are and how we might go about doing that, but I'd like to see if the rest of the commission agrees with that. And I know, having spoken to the city manager, uh, we've done a little looking. Uh, but I think that we're, we're not quite there yet.
I don't have a problem with that, Commissioner.
Mister Mayor, I, I don't either. Um, I similarly had brought it up to the city manager and city attorney back in April. Um. It sounds like the county because of M C A was prevented from doing so, which is why it was a, um. It was temporarily closed, um, but because now it is adjacent to, it appears, since it's now adjacent to, um, city, the property that is annexed into the city, um, it's now designated to city jurisdiction and we do not have the same, um, requirements under M C A and can permanently close it where the county could, could not. And I would be fully supportive of that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the uh, commission?
Mayor. So Director Brink is engaging the county on this discussion to make sure everybody's on the same page that it's annexed into the city. We believe that it is, and then we'll do the necessary uh, research to report back to the commission on the permanent type closure, uh, however we define it.
You bet. All right, recommendations, Helen, Mrs. Council, Representative Perry, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, sorry. All right.
All right.
Um, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm Nancy from H H district two. Our last, we see meeting is April twenty-sixth and our next meeting, May twenty-two. Today, I want to talk to you about about this. That has come up as a result of the outreach efforts that H H made. We've begun door hanging, introducing ourselves, residents. We also had a table at the Art Walk last Friday where we talked to a lot of Helena residents. From our outreach efforts, we learned that there's a lot of confusion about who H C C actually is. People say, well, if we're the citizens council, then who is the neighborhood council? On the municipal uh, election ballot, our name appears as neighborhood council, but in city charter, we're called the citizens council. In anticipation of the municipal election coming up on November seventh, I talked to the Lewis and Clark County Election Office specifically to Amy Reeves, clerk and recorder, and Connor Fitzpatrick, the election supervisor. Amy's worked for the county for at least the last twenty years and Connor's been in his position for the, for this is his second year. Neither Amy nor Connor knew why the ballot refers to us as the neighborhood council, only that that's how it was when they started working there. I mentioned that listing us on the ballot as the neighborhood council is causing confusion for voters and asked if our name on the ballot could be changed to citizen council. They explained that they don't have the authority to change the wording themselves because this is upcoming, the municipal election is a city election. They suggested that H C C approach you to ask uh, for the change and for the election office will do whatever you tell them they should do. We're asking the commission to give us guidance as to what we can do to make this ballot change happen. The election office said that if the upcoming municipal election requires a primary, they will need your decision by the end of June. If there is no primary, they're going to need your decision by the end of September. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
Thank you, Miss Bear. Uh, comments or questions from the commission? Uh, oh, we're here.
I, well, I was just gonna say, I guess, with the clerk, like to. Is that, is that, does it go through your office, I guess, is the question? Uh, so Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I did engage the city attorney on the matter. Um, Connor Fitzpatrick from the elections office did reach out to me and asked for some historical reference as to why the ballot had been um, written as is, or that the council had been called what they had on the ballot historically. And I think that uh, the city attorney and I are in the process, I guess, of, of determining what would be the best course of action going forward, and we can definitely make a recommendation. As I said, the city attorney and I just started this conversation because I received the email the other day, so if you're comfortable with that, either myself or city attorney doctor can reach out to you.
I don't have a problem with that. But what does, what does the charter say?
Neighborhood councils.
Citizens council is in the charter.
But, well, so there shall be seven neighborhood councils collectively comprising a Helena citizens council.
So, but there, there's no confusion that they're creating the confusion.
It, it's, Mister Mayor, uh, it is referenced as three separate things. I, I can appreciate the citizens' concern. It's referenced in a slightly different nomenclature, um, in three different areas. So I think uh, the city attorney, she can obviously speak to the matter as well, but she was comfortable also moving forward with what had been handled historically one particular way rather than shifting gears. But again, I think that that's early in the discussion.
I don't have a problem with that. Commissioners?
Bye.
Okay. Mister, you have your marching orders on there. Thank you. Uh, Miss Bear?
Yes.
It will be looked into by legal and the city manager's office and they will report to us and we'll report to you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay, city managers report.
Mayor, I have nothing to report for sitting.
Cause I'm betting with this lady. Presentation, Public Health Update. I'm assuming you all received, uh, the update from Ms. Neiman. I'm sorry, Commissioner Shirtlet, you didn't receive it, but we have that, we have the update here for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Comments or questions? Anybody wants to say anything on that? We're alone. Uh, Department Reports, Fiscal Year Twenty-four, Budget General Overview, Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I know that, uh, we have a couple presentations, so we're getting close to the end of the overview of the draft budget. Um, and uh, it would be my hope that were possible, we might receive some direction toward the end of this meeting to start building the preliminary budget for consideration across the hallway, uh, in the council chambers. So with that, Mayor, I would turn it over to, uh, Finance Director, Chief of Danison.
Thank you, Manager Burton. Um, good evening there and Commissioners. So we wanted to bring back to you, um, uh, overview of, uh, general fund expenditures, uh, revenues and reserves. And then also, uh, bring some, uh, decision points to the commission um, for funding requests and funding needs. And so, uh, I, I wanted to start by just kind of talking about general fund cash reserves, basically. Um, and then move into an overview again of our revenue, our expenditures. Um, what we're recommending is a allocated amount for capital. Um, there are some decision points that the commission needs to make about community program funding. And then there's also the discussion of, uh, making sure that, uh, uh, we're presenting a balanced budget. And then after my overview, uh, Director McMahon will be giving a presentation and overview of compensation. Um, that's proposed in the fiscal twenty-four budget to include the market wage study that had happened. Um, discussion on health insurance, um, proposed COLA and proposed new staff, um, uh, for the city in fiscal twenty-four. So next slide, please. The, the first, uh, item I wanted to go over with you is our reserves and so, um, referring back to our, our budget policy that we brought at our very close meeting to kind of go over our, um, uh, budget policies with you again. We have an operating reserve in the general fund that is about sixty days of, uh, operating revenues. And so at the end of fiscal twenty-three of this year, I'm projecting that that reserve is about four point two six million dollars. We also have in our budget policy that, uh, um, if feasible, um, we, we take twenty percent above that targeted operating reserve at the end of the fiscal year and earmark it for contingency reserve. I'm estimating that the end of fiscal twenty-three, that, uh, amount will be right around one point three five million to add to the existing reserve. And I have another slide that'll, that'll go over the details of that. Also in our cash reserves right now, we have, um, about two point five, two point six million dollars. Um. One point six of that is, uh, earmarked as a, a reserve from, uh, general fund savings. And nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine hundred dollars of that is unallocated, uh, uh, general fund savings that the commission has yet to make the decision on. We, uh, met with the respective, uh, department heads that have, um, um, are stakeholder in the general capital funding. And, um, we're recommending about a one point two million dollar um, allocation for general capital. I had originally set it at one million, but after having to meet with all the, the, uh, directors and the needs, we, we whittled down three point two five million to one point two. And that leaves, uh, um, an unrestricted reserve of one point six million in the general fund after all of this, uh, allocation at the end of fiscal twenty-three. Don't confuse that with the one point six million that's for the general fund savings. So on the next slide, I do have a little, uh, spreadsheet to kind of show you how I came up with what, what the reserves were. So, um, I'll draw your attention to the bottom of the slide. At the end of fiscal twenty-two, we put nine hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars um, into a contingency fund. And at the end of fiscal twenty-three, I'm projecting to put another one point three million. And so that contingency will be about two point three million dollars at the end of fiscal twenty-three. That is at the discretion of the commission, um, to make decisions on how they want to, uh, spend that money, but it's, uh, pretty much primarily earmarked for, uh, emergency, um, but could potentially be used for other, other needs that the city manager might bring to your attention. The, um, the cash balances at the beginning of fiscal twenty-three were about eleven million dollars. And I will note that at the end of fiscal twenty-two, the general fund did deplete one point six million dollars of its cash reserves by allocating to that, to the streets fund. So had it not been for that allocation, that the general fund would have an additional one point six million dollars in cash reserves. Um, we have the target operating reserve, like I indicated, of four point two million. Um, we're projecting it's one point three million transfer to contingency. We have the two point five, two point six million of unallocated, uh, uh, general fund savings reserves. And I, uh, I have a projection of almost one point two million in capital, which then leaves the unrestricted cash reserve in the general fund of about one point six million dollars. Does anybody have any questions on that? Thank you. Next slide. So, um, as I indicated before, we met with the, uh, stakeholders, the department heads that, um, have, uh, capital needs requests and that includes facility improvements. It includes parks and recreation and includes, um, uh, police, public, uh, police vehicles, police equipment and, um, some various other, uh, yeah, vehicles and equipment, uh, for example, um, uh, engineering is also in the, the, uh, general fund and so they, they're part of that pool as well. Um, in total, we had three point two five million dollars in requests. I will say about one point seven three million of that was for facility repair needs. Um, to, uh, include everything from, uh, replacing boilers to roofs. Um, so it's a pretty extensive.
What was that number?
Pardon me?
What was that number?
Uh, about one point seven three million was for, uh, uh, related to facility repair and maintenance.
Thank you.
Um, we came together and because I, you know, we can't obviously fund three point two five million dollars of capital in one year. Um, everybody got together and we whittled it down to about one point two million dollars in, um, capital funding and we'll be going over the details of um, those recommendations with you at our next administrative meeting, um, on the twenty-fifth, the same time that we're having the general fund savings applications. So that leads me into our revenues. Um, we've projected about twenty-seven point three million dollars in revenues for fiscal year twenty-four um, in the general fund. Um, of that, uh, the general taxes make up about forty-six point eight percent and I will, um, kind of remind you, the growth of that is typically, um, related to the one half of the, um, general related, general related inflation over the last three years, plus new construction. Um, so it's a, a little bit taxing to have, um, these large inflationary increases that we're experiencing and not have our property taxes grow at the same rate. Um, we're projecting, um, the permissive health levy and I'll go into a little bit more detail with that, but that makes about ten point two percent of total revenues, the state shared revenue, eighteen point four percent of totals. And then the other miscellaneous charges, uh, only about two point four percent miscellaneous charges. I'll go in a little bit detail, but that's more or less parks and, and rent fees and some other miscellaneous public safety charges. Um, our cost recovery, which is our cost allocation of, um, allocating general fund administrative departments to other funds that are, um, receiving benefit from those departments. And then just some miscellaneous other, about seven point six percent of that total. Mister Mayor. Um, in the next slide, uh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just really briefly, uh, this is just, and we've talked about this before and I know we don't have some of the hard numbers, but can you maybe talk a little bit about some of the impact of being a community that has so many properties that are tax exempt? And yet we still provide service for those and how that may be impact. I think a lot of people forget how much the city actually does without recouping those or, or the rest of the citizens are covering them. I, I mean, I, I think.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean for asking that. Yes, and that topic does come up a lot. Um, I don't know the percentage of city property that is tax exempt. Um, typically what happens when we're doing our assessment calculations, we only get, um, a dump of taxable properties. So that doesn't include exempt properties on it. Um, and I honestly, I haven't had time to devote to what percentage of properties in, in, in Helena are, but you can imagine we have all of the state offices, um, the city offices, the county offices, and then all of our nonprofits that have, um, property here in the city as well. So this particular city compared to other cities than Montana, larger cities in Mon- Montana, has a, has a, a kind of a disproportionate um, impact to it because of the state offices that are, that are also, um, located in the city. So that presents a lot of challenges to, um, the property tax base, which funds all of our general government activities, um, and not being able to receive, um, tax run from the sources.
Thanks.
You bet. Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. And but relative to those properties, it's uh, accurate to say they do pay into special districts, right?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Logan, they, um, are not exempt from special assessments. They do pay special assessments, which are our street assessments, they pay for our urban forestry, our, um, and, and lighting district assessments and such. So they do, they do participate in, in paying for services in the city. It's just that property tax base that they're exempt from.
Thank you. Thanks. You bet.
Um, so last year, um, and, and without getting our final, um, uh, taxable values, I'm only estimating it this time. I had a conversation with the, um, county finance director about what an estimated inflation factor was. It's anywhere between two point four three, two point four six of the inflationary factor that would be, um, uh, added to the property tax base um, for our calculation of our mills. Um, right now I'm estimating our, uh, values in fiscal twenty-four to be about eighty-three million. Um, and, uh, estimated mills for fiscal twenty-four, I'm estimating at this point, one, one twenty-nine point seven nine mills. Again, um, I won't know the actual numbers until we get, um, our values from the state, which was in August, but that's just a ballpark estimate that I, I have for right now. Um, in comparison to last year, um, our general mills were one twenty-six point eight three. Um, I did do a little bit of an estimate on that calculation and, um, you know, the inflation factor adds about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand to the revenue. Um, newly taxable value about four hundred and seventy-nine thousand and, and, and estimated increase in taxable values of about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of that increase. We also transfer, uh, money from our fire levy. It was a general fund to support six firefighters. And that's calculated to be about six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars this year. Fine. So the next, um, levy that I wanted to discuss with you tonight is the, uh, permissive health levy. Um. As you know, in fiscal twenty-three, we implemented an enhanced, uh, benefit structure that was, um, led by the, the, um, human resources team, um, for retention and recruitment purposes for the city and put us a little bit more in alignment with what, um, the state and accounting are offering. I won't go into the details of that because, uh, Director McMahon will talk to that in her presentation. But, um, that did present a, uh, budget impact to the city, um, and to the, to the permissive health levy. So I'm proposing, um, to, uh, have a health levy of two point eight million dollars in fiscal twenty-four. That's an increase of almost six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the prior year. Um, two hundred and eleven thousand six hundred dollars of that is related to the nine percent rate increase that we're receiving from M M I A. And four hundred and eighty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety is related to the enhanced benefit that the employees are receiving. Um, the estimated mills, um, I'm looking at based on our values would be thirty-three point seven mills. That'd be an increase of about six point three five mills from the prior year. I did do a calculation of what that would cost, um, with a half, um, you know, an average home price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it's about thirty dollars per home a year of the impact of that mill, mill increase. Um, and also, and Renee, I'll speak to this as well, but the average cost of an employee went from a thousand seventy-four per month. We used to just budget a fixed amount. And now we're bu- uh, budgeting based on the plan that employees are participating in and it, but on average throughout the city, um, it went from a thousand seventy-four to thirteen hundred a month per employee.
Any questions? Sorry, I did have one. Do we know what other communities are estimating will be their increase in health insurance?
I might revert that question to Director McMahon.
Is it part of your presentation?
Um, Mayor, Commissioner, not that exact question. So it is difficult to estimate exactly, you know, what the average is. We've asked the question, but depending on the industry, depending on the size, depending on the source of funding, um, it goes anywhere from zero to fifteen percent or more. Um, M M I A is nine percent across the board for all cities and towns that are covered by M M I A. So, um, it's really been difficult to, you know, really project. Some are self-funded, some are fully insured. So it really is, I asked a couple agents, a couple different representatives and that I could not pin down an exact number.
Yeah, Mayor, and I would just add, Commissioner, the, the actuarial recommendation was fourteen percent. The M M I A board cut it back to nine, as I understand it. Or, or was it twelve?
Right. So originally it was twelve, however, between one and thirteen. Um, we were able through M M I A to negotiate to nine. That's right.
And the other consideration we have is that we had fallen so far from behind the market last year that we're trying to play catch up. And so it's tough to do an apples to apples comparison.
And one other thing, Mayor and Commissioner, Commissioners, if I could, um, we know that the cost of, you know, goods and living right now is on the rise and so we've been advised before, we were advised to budget five to eight percent just for trend alone, and that's not even claims experiences and things like that. Now we're being advised to budget eight to ten percent every year for trend alone, given the cost of doing business, basically.
Thank you, Commissioner, Director. Please.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, just a, a quick question. Is this a, you know, not necessarily one-off, but do we anticipate that this large increase will be this year and not continue? Are you saying each year it's going to go up by an additional ten percent, requiring the levy to also increase?
Um, Mayor, Commissioner, it's hard to predict. The average increase from M M I A over the past ten years or more has been about four and a half percent. So this is a little larger spike than, you know, normal and through average. So it is difficult to know because of the cost of doing business again, and we have a lot of, um, higher than a, average claims. And so there's a lot that goes into the calculation. Really difficult to predict, I would say.
Thank you, Director. Um, can I also add to that is that, um, you know, really, when we went to this enhanced benefit, we're doing some best guesses on what budget impact would be. Um, had we really had more data, we would have proposed a higher levy last year to help support. Um, because we are using cash reserves to support the increase in costs to the, not only the general fund, but other funds that were impacted by this as well. So um, in this particular case, I, we're really have the data now and we're resetting the base of what the levy should be and, um, moving forward. Um, the discussion can happen of how much of an increase to pass off to employees or how the employer take can, can happen as well, then those calculations can be proposed. Thank you.
Good information. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So I'm sorry, on the last slide, you have the fire department levy. What is that, a quick two and mills?
Oh, I have.
I may have missed that.
I, I think you're right around. It's, oh, I want to say about twelve point six mills. But that's not for that particular amount. Their entire levy is about twelve point six mills last year.
So that remains the same as last year?
Um, it'll depend on taxable values, but, um, it, it generates about a million dollars a year.
It's last year, it, uh, fire department supplemental was twelve point five nine, twelve point six. So it sounds like it's going to be about the same.
I, I would anticipate to be about the same.
Okay.
I don't anticipate that really to go up.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm a pleasure. On the health end.
On the health end, get aligned.
Go ahead.
On the health insurance, Mr. Levy, do we know what the county is estimating their permissive levy will be? I I'm just curious about when someone gets a tax bill. Cities and counties are the only ones that get to permissive levy for health insurance.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I I don't have that information, however, when I talked to um. The finance director last year about their permissive health levy. They have in the past levied, have not levied the maximum. That they could give that levy, they have a new finance director now and I I and I don't know what their. Their proposed budget is at this point.
Now, but I think that this is really important because ensuring that we have a healthy workforce and we're. Benefits are obviously a really big tool in our recruitment and retention and. Everyone, I mean, school, there are a lot of school districts state that are a lot more too, I know that they're having to. They don't permissively levy it, they pull from their general fund, but. Excellent, see, but everyone, I mean, it is not unusual in any industry right now to have these type of increases, but. It is a shock, I think, to the system, just given where things are.
Okay. Please continue, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, so moving on, um, to next slide, please. Thank you, our state shared revenues, that's um um entitlement share revenues that we get from the state. Um, that went up, uh, and we know that amount now because they they published that, it's um. Um. About five million dollars, a hundred and sixty four thousand dollar increase from the prior year, which is about three point four percent above the prior year. And the next slide, so we have other sources of revenue, we have charges for services, which are only about two point four percent. It's indicated early, it's really park and rec fees, um, swimming, bees, um, tennis fees, those types of. Uh, recreation activities. Um, if if we have a fire service contract, that's considered a charge for service. For example, our contract with the four Harrison to provide fire services for them. Um, police also have um different various service contracts that they might. Negotiate, and so those charges for services are also incorporated. Um, cost recovery is uh three point nine six million for uh the general fund for fiscal twenty four. Um, those are our general overhead allocations and it also um. Will indicate to you that public works, industrial facilities are one hundred percent. Um, recoup, so even though their costs are in the general fund, they're one hundred percent allocated out, so it's somewhat of a wash for those. For those departments and then engineering is eighty percent recovered because they do spend about twenty percent of their time on general government activities. For the community development planning department. And then we have other um miscellaneous revenues, licenses and permits, um, some intergovernmental revenue, for example, if the county was reimbursing. Us for something, um fines, investment interests, um, and, you know, miscellaneous transfers that might happen. Um, so as you can see that the lion's share, obviously, of our general fund revenue is is our our generated property taxes. The uh health, health levy and state shared revenues. Any other questions on revenue or? So in our. Okay, thank you.
I do, but I think I interrupted her.
Alright, thank you, um, so our proposed expenses for uh fiscal twenty four are right now at about two point four million. Um, when we originally brought our general fund to you, we were completely balanced, but we have made um. Very adjustments um based on the market wage information that we received. Um, some employer classifications that we received, increases or decreases in in insurance rates and things like that. We finalized it and so um we're right now uh at a negative seventy four thousand, two hundred and ninety five dollars. Um, expenditures exceeding current year revenues in the general fund. Um, included in our expenditures right now is the um. A four percent increase for the Humane Society, and we'll get into that a little bit more, uh, three and a half new general fund staff. Um, that includes a budget analyst, a um court officer. Uh, maintenance tech for industrial facilities and um increasing um. Uh, evidence technician by one five. Um, to a full-time position. Um, it includes a proposed four percent cola. Um, the health insurance uh increases that the city is um proposing to to pay for. And um also the community services program, and we heard more about that at the joint meeting for the seven thousand dollars. What's not included in our general fund at this time are any capital. Um, our general capital and we'll go over that in more detail at our next um meeting. Um, uh, any funding for the solar loan program. The Humane Society's full request, the historic reservations, full request. Um, community program grant requests, um. An increase in pool expenditures to bring it to um seven day a week operation. Um, we're negotiating a M O U with the B I D for trash services in the Lucky Mall area. And in the downtown area, and um we're currently under negotiations, um, we have to renew our P E T V. Um. Contract, so that could potentially, I just built in a three percent increase, but I I'm not sure with that. What that contract amount will be.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I would just add that on the F Y twenty four pool expenses, I think we got clear direction that. Commissioner wants to maintain the present level of service. Yeah, we'll just clean that up as we walk through the conversation and it'll be a part of the art discussion as well.
You bet.
Thank you, just a good question, I'm I'm looking and maybe it's there and I'm just not seeing it. So with the things that are included, the deficit seventy four thousand. With the things not included, if they were all fully funded, what would that deficit be?
Um, I believe I have a slide.
It is, it is there, okay.
Yeah. Um, thank you. Um, so just in general, our operating, our our personnel is three point seven million, that's a six. Six point eight percent increase over the prior fiscal year. Our operating supplies are six hundred and ninety three thousand, which is fifteen point seven percent increase over the prior year. Purchased services are two point five million, which are nine two, nine point two percent increase. Um, intercity and internal charges are one point three million. Uh, point four uh percent increase, fixed charges are one point two million and our transfers out. Are about a million dollars, and so just uh for interest, for for uh information, intercity are like um. One to one department, like our shop and our fleet services will charge other departments for those particular services like fuel and. The police department and um. The fixed charges are more or less assessments and um rent that we have to pay to be in the building and those kind of. The uh next slide, I have just uh with and and manager Burton um indicated this that. Um, we did get direction from. The commission to fully fund fiscal twenty three um cool expenditures, um. And so currently they have a deficit spending of forty three thousand. And that's from last year, they need sixty thousand. Um, for this spring and training costs and another twenty thousand in operating costs if they open on June twentieth. Um, so the total fiscal twenty three deficit that uh they'll be seeking is a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars in cash reserve. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm saying. Um, in order to uh. Have the the this, the pool fully funded um for a seven day a week operation in fiscal twenty four. Will cost an estimated additional eighty thousand dollars. So to- total pool, pool funding for both years, the um to fully fund it for a seven day operations is two hundred and three thousand dollars.
That's true. Good question, thank you. Just a couple of questions, the. Uh, estimates of the seven day a week operations is based on the current rate increase, but not. Factoring in potential other rate increases and or expanded hours, is that correct?
Correct.
So there's a possibility that number could go down.
Um, Mayor and Commissioner Reed, if we were to implement um further fee increases. That funding could go down, however, I will say that. Inflationary costs continue to go up as well. Um, the chemicals at the pool um for uh chlorine and that are are just. Astronomical right now, they have skyrocketed, so this is our best guess right now. Um, we're not sure what what those chemical costs and and electricity is proposed to go up. You know, twenty five percent, so um, you know, when you're operating that pool that much and. I'm not, I, you know, this, like I said, this is my best guess right now.
Sure. Thank you, just a quick follow up, so on the slide with the. Um. Contingency, the reserve slide. Is it possible that some of those, the overages from this year could be covered by the savings from F Y twenty three? Uh, that you talked about with the. Cash balances and reserves that were from this year. As opposed to using ARPA, which is a separate kind of reserves, correct?
Um, Commissioner Reed and Mayor, thank you for that question. Um. I I I think that the contingencies expenditures are at the discretion of the commission. Um, and it's it's earmarked. That was originally set up earmarked for emergency purposes. Um, however, I did adapt the policy this year. Um, to allow the commission a little bit more flexibility.
Thank you.
Uh, no, not not until you get to this.
Okay, well. And yeah, please continue.
Yes, so um, just in the uh next slide, I just outlined, um. As you can see in most of the pool expenditures, um, when we discussed a two hundred thousand dollar increase. Um, there was a question as to how much of that was salaries, well, I'll tell you about ninety five percent of it was related to salaries. Um, as you can see in uh fiscal twenty two, their their salaries and benefits were two hundred and three thousand. And uh. Uh. If projected with no service cuts in fiscal twenty four, it's four hundred and thirty six thousand, five hundred dollars. Pretty significant increase over over a year um for for the operations. Yes.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was gonna ask, but with that. I mean, we were having to, last summer, we were having to close the pool because we didn't have staff. To cover it, so I guess can you talk about that and maybe this is their question for Doug, but.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I think I'm gonna defer that question to um Commissioner or not Commissioner, but Director Smith.
Can you please repeat the question?
Um, can you talk about the the, uh, last summer we were having to close the pool due to step not having staff, so. I mean, it's kind of a double edged sword, these increases are obviously. Um. Significant, but if we don't have the staff to keep it open. I guess, can you talk about that dichotomy?
Um, I'm not. Commissioner, um, I'm not totally sure um about the 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 answer. I do know that last summer was one of the. Lowest number of days closed for pool season. It was in the single digits, so I'm not quite sure if that was the case, I know COVID the year before, there were issues.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, and Muni's had the issue last year of not being open.
Okay.
Please.
Um, Mayor and Commissioner Dean, so if you look at the slide, in twenty twenty three, the actual was four hundred and nineteen. I think that's because we were fully staffed. And we did have those wage increases, it were the two years prior that were affected by short staffed COVID.
That's what I'm thinking, okay, yeah, so I'm one fiscal year off, got it.
Right, please continue.
Thank you, um, any other questions on the pool? So the next uh topic is um. Community program funding, so um some of these programs have just been built. Into the budget since I've been here and there's been very little discussion about them. Um, at the commission level, and so really these are choices. That the commission should discuss and make and make decisions on, and so that's why I'm. Calling it out this year for you to have the conversations and to make those decisions, and so. Um, starting with the P E T V, I did build in a three percent increase, not exactly sure what that contract renewal. Will end up at, um, and I I think it expires every year, every fiscal year, and so. Um, our uh facility superintendent kind of spearheads that contract. Um, so I'm not sure the status of that at this point, we had discussed with the B I D, um. Adding eight thousand dollars to the budget so that they could do um more trash pickup in the downtown area and. Manager Burton might be able to speak more to that.
Mayor Commissioners, you'll recall that they wanted to redo the assessments and transition even by thousand additional cost to the city. We're gonna be coming forward with their recommendation that actually lowers the city assessment a little bit. And I think in terms of building that partnership and looking at opportunities where we can work together. They're asking for additional help on trash pickup and watering of flowers, but rather than interrupting the city solid waste. Operation. I think that this is a good partnership opportunity and uh it just. Helps them maintain the flowers and trash uh pickup at a at a higher level. Uh, which is the purpose of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just just a quick question for for people listening. I think a lot of people assume that down there is part of regular solid waste, can can you explain a little bit about why it is not? And why we need additional services? As opposed to anywhere else in the city that does it has track.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Commissioner, the. The regular operation, you know, if you pick up once a day on a commercial site or once a week. Uh, then that's what the assessment is on your tax bill. Uh, the B I D made a decision to have a higher level of service and therefore uh this program exists. Is on business needs in the downtown. And I think this just uh. Uh. Demonstrates a good partnership with the city and the B I D to maintain that higher level of service for the downtown area as well as. Care for the flower plots that everybody's learned to love so much.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Thank you, um, I have a question for you that I. I don't know if it's at all related to this, so I apologize, but uh, so when we're talking, when we set the resolution for mills. In September, whatever it is, uh. We have um the group health insurance, the general levy. The fire department supplemental and the general obligation debt. What would those mills be on that?
Um, I, I think I have that in in my next presentation, but I think it it it's about seven mills.
Okay, thank you.
That's what it was last year, and it that stays uh relatively stable because. It's only levied in order to make the annual payment on the debt service.
Thanks. And it'll relate here in a minute, maybe.
Any others?
Mr. Mayor, on this side, so. Um. You mentioned additional. Partnership, I'm really anxious to see once we get the B I D. Work plan and budget presentation, I think that. Um, there's opportunity for, I think a lot of people get confused the difference between B I D and D H I. B I D is only the property owners, D H I is are are the business owners and their. Membership organization that do not pay into an assessment and I think a lot of people think that programming that happens is. They overlap some, but it's it's two separate things, but I I think that is. And there's been a lot of conversation within the B I D board about whether. You know, best uses of their almost three hundred thousand dollars a year that they get in assessments, um. And so I think that that is a good opportunity for us to talk about. What that actually looks like when it's implemented. Um, there've been a lot of disagreements on that board as to whether they're being used to their highest and best use or not and. Um. I think it's worth that conversation. Um, on, I had a question, on the um P E G T V piece. And this is probably, I might be. Kicking hornets' nest here, I don't know, I think it would be worth having a conversation. If every, I mean, the public, for those in the public that are here, and anyone comes into the building over the next couple of weeks, you'll see lots of. Upgrades that are happening in the commission chambers and in this room. This commission and the county commission have invested a lot to make sure that we have the highest quality equipment, to make sure that when you're at home, you're getting. Um, you can participate and and observe and um it's been a really conscious effort to modernize the. Um, you can participate and, and observe. And um, it's been a really conscious effort to modernize the way that we. Interact with the public. And so I would be really interested in finding out, like, with those upgrades. Can we experience some savings in this contract? Right now, there are two, from what I understand, there are two separate. Systems as to HCTV has their own cameras and has their own. It's a closet with equipment, but it's all done. I mean, we stream through Zoom and on YouTube now. I think that it's important that we continue to have this um, availability, obviously, on. The cable channel and the rest, but. And I think the work that they do in the community to, you know. S- stream and record and provide civic television locally is really important, but. Can we experience some? Savings in it, in us becoming clearly a lot more efficient in how we. Um, and how we record and stream and. It allows public participation virtually and otherwise. Um, I know that's gonna be a really hard conversation, but it's a huge contract that we enter every year and. Like, you know. We, we're modernizing for a reason. We should experience some. Efficiency savings through that.
Maybe with modernizing because we've got some old equipment that needs to be upgraded and the work still to see. Anyway, any other comments?
And you're hearing the upgrades right now.
Thank you, um. Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I'll uh, I'll speak with Superintendent Samson about that. Um, uh, so moving on to the community service program. Um, they historically only asked for seven thousand and in the joint meeting, they asked for seven thousand again, so that's what. Um, we have currently in the budget. Um, the solar loan program, I have a little bit more of a discussion about this in my uh, later presentation. But currently, right now, we have about, uh, when I calculated the reserves for that fund, there's about seventy two thousand. Been there now in cash reserves that could fund fiscal twenty four requests. Um, if the commission wanted to decide to fund above and beyond that, um, they could.
What's the criteria for that? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
The criteria.
Um.
I mean, you know, uh, you can give it to me later.
Yeah, I, I. I'll have to get, I'll have to get you that information, um. The Community Development Office manages that program. So, um, also at the joint meeting, um, we heard from the Historic Preservation Office. Um, they, uh. The city is uh, historically funded over the last few years, several years, um. Almost ten or more at a twenty thousand dollar rate. I went back and looked. Um, at what the city had funded and they're requesting. Um, us to fund fifty percent of their fiscal twenty four proposed budget. Which is estimated to be about a hundred and twenty thousand and so fifty percent of that would be uh, sixty thousand. It did ask the um, county if they could provide a little bit more detail on that budget and. Most of it's staffing costs. And so they are requesting to increase one of their part-time staffs to full time. Um, in their fiscal twenty four budget as well, but in looking at uh, that their. Budget, most of it's um, just that.
Yeah, but I think part of the reason, uh, I was a part of the former commission. And I think part of the reasoning, the uh, the past commission didn't want to increase with. We have no jurisdiction over the uh, the positions. They don't report to us, we don't follow through, I mean, we, we have nothing to do with them, so to speak. And so they were very leery to uh. Add anything on to it, it, we don't have any say in it. So I, I'm just giving the historical.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I, um, having not known that history. Um, I know that, um, we have a, a meeting set up with the Community Development Director. Chris Brink and Manager Burton, I think it's later this week. Um, to discuss that particular program and also the, um. The Housing Coordinator Program with Good Sam's to get a little bit more context on. On that. Uh, the Humane Society, uh. In their joint commission meeting, asked for a six percent increase over the prior year. I had already built in a four percent increase, so that would be a. Um, an increase of about thirteen hundred dollars for that particular one. And then other uh, community grants are at the discretion of the commission. Um, last uh, uh, year, we gave uh. Helena Area Community Foundation twenty thousand, we gave MBAC five thousand, the Symphony five thousand. And then we, uh, also earmarked a thousand for the Sun Run and then a, a thousand for Big Sky Pride. Um, again, those are uh. For you to consider. Um, on the next slide, I did kind of put out what, what the, what the funding requirements is. If we were to um, fund all of those requests um, for fiscal twenty four. Which would include an additional eighty thousand for the pool to fund, um. Their operations would be eighty thousand, thirteen hundred for the Community Society. An additional forty thousand for historic preservation, um, a potential. Increase over what I built in for PEG TV. Um, I'm not sure what that would be, eight thousand for the trash and um. Uh, potential thirty two thousand plus for community grant programs. And so. We're really looking uh, for the commission's direction. On what you would like to do with those, preferably by the end of this meeting. And uh, that would put a, a total deficit. If we funded those community programs. Um, the grant set that the same level as last year. Um, that would be thirty two thousand. And so I just uh, came up with two hundred and thirty five thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars in total. Funding needed for a balanced budget. And I laid out some options for you to consider. I think at the last meeting, it indicated that. Every one percent in the COLA in the general fund is a hundred and thirty thousand. We have uh, general fund savings, um, there's an option to not fund. Particular requests, you know, there's an option to ask staff to cut back their operations even more. Um, there's also other recommendations from the commission that we can consider.
Mr. Mayor, do mind, because I got a room. Go ahead. Thank you so much. Uh, just quickly, my two cents on this. Um, I, I would like to explore the option of the contingency funding for the pool specifically. It does seem like we had an overage due to a massive change in salary structure. And if we can. Address that and then budget more um, accurately going forward. For the pool and look at rate increases so that it is a one-off, that, that would be my preference. Um, I also asked about the historical preservation and heard the concerns of the past. So I think making a, a. Right now, I would be less inclined to move to a fifty percent coverage of that position. Absent time to explore what that partnership would look like. Um, I would say with the community, um, grant programs. I, I think we have given uh, quite a bit of money through ARPA and CARES to HACF. I'd like to see if we could address those projects through HACF and their existing funds, which I do not think have all been spent. Um. So remaining, I would support the additional thirteen hundred dollars for the Humane Society, given the volume of work that they do for the city and that, that critical piece. Uh, and PEG, since we don't know yet, I think the three percent we've budgeted seems appropriate for now. Um, and I would definitely support with trash. Uh, BID funding, um, given that I, I have actually seen recently private cleaning services out there. Um, I think it's important that we do maintain, um, the, the sort of level of quality we have down on the, the downtown area right now. So I would support that with that. I have to, yes.
Mayor, may I ask Commissioner Dean one?
That's cool.
So, um. A- as far as the community grants, the, the thirty two thousand, you're proposing that. They, they fund out of their existing resources in fiscal twenty four.
It is my understanding right now that they still have funding, so that would be my preference for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Given all of the factors that have increased the number of lines, and if there's funding available, we should use that funding instead of adding to it. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer questions of priority. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay.
Question before we drive on. So I'm not sure, I hope I can frame this correctly, um. If. If the mills for the general obligation debt are at seven. We've got all the other mills figured out or estimated here roughly that. Uh, look like at the total up to about a hundred and eighty three point oh eight. Which would be a five point three percent increase in Mills levy. Which. As a taxpayer, it gets, it gets a property tax statement. I'm gonna assume that that's roughly for the city, that the five point. Three percent increase to the bill that I will get. Um, so. When we go back to the beginning of our discussion about budget, in the very first meeting. Um, we talked about, well, one in, increases to revenue, but twelve and a half percent over previous year. Um. The departments, it was explained in that general overview, were asked to cut their proposed. Their proposed budgets by six percent, which those, those proposed budgets, I think, were estimated to be roughly twelve percent. Last year, and so they were asked to cut half of that.
The operations portion.
Yeah, so. Um, we obviously have increased remissive health levy. Uh, COLA and pay study, now both of those. Increases I'm very supportive of, I wanna take care of our employees. I think that's very important. For a lot of the reasons that were stated by a lot of people here. Um. But then we're finding ourselves, you know, with having difficulty funding pool and um, other. Well, and, and just to take care of the health levy and the market study and the COLA. Those are some basic things that we need to be taking care of as a municipality. So. I guess sort of along the lines of what Commissioner Dean was saying, I think, I do think that, I don't know if we solved it today, but I do think we have some. Tough. Decisions to be made when we've asked staff, for example, to cut six percent from their budgets. I struggle with. Funding other people's endeavors, you know, the community brands and so on. And that's, uh. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is. We're, we're giving money to other organizations, but. We're struggling to take care of our own. And so I guess philosophically, as we have this discussion, that's. And where I'm gonna be asked, um. So, just to stay, I guess, this. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions at this point? Okay, thank you. So, um. Uh, next up is, uh, I'm gonna pass the baton over to Director McMahon, and she's gonna go over. Um, our compensation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Smart, Commissioner.
I think I'll just save them up there.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Renee McMahon, the Human Resources Director. I'm gonna talk to you this evening about compensation. When we're talking about compensation, it's both wages and benefits. For all of our employees. So first, an overview, just so you know, sort of the foundation from which I will be speaking. Um, wages, we have many categories of how and where we pay our employees. So we have our. Temporary employee pay matrix, that's our part-time people, primarily seasonal employees. We have our regular permanent employee pay matrix, and then we have. Four unions that have their own um, pay matrices. And so. The firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, and then our records clerks out of the police department have um, their own individualized pay matrices. Currently, the benefits that the city offers is health insurance through MMI. We have the two. Plan designs, we have a high deductible health plan. And we have a traditional health plan. And then we have, um, you know, retirement through PERS, the state retirement plan through IMPARA, and then the fire department. Retirement in the police department, PERS, dental vision, live EAP. Um, health savings accounts and flexible spending accounts. And this excludes like our leave plans and things like that, holidays. Um, and then our benefits that we have is voluntary. The employees can pay for additional. Retirement through a deferred compensation for fifty seven. Um, they have supplemental life insurance that they can purchase. And then we have. Um, at FLAC, which is a supplement, supplement, supplemental employee paid benefit also. Um, just a little bit of history, um, since two thousand fifteen. You can see that the city of Helena cost of living increases were pretty minimal to none. Um, since the fiscal year, um, starting July one of. Uh, two thousand, two thousand fifteen. Um, in July one of twenty one and July one of twenty two, we made a really deliberate. Um, decision and proposals which the commission supported at the time. To reflect the CPI and cost of living that was going on in the mountain region. So we had those increases in twenty one and twenty two. So you can see in twenty twenty one and two twenty two, we were starting to gain some momentum and sustain those cost of living increases. Also, um, before last July, so going into July of twenty one. You can see there are health insurance structure. We had four different plan designs. Bridger, Madison, Mission, and High Deductible Health Plan, each with four different tier levels of coverage from employee only to employee family. If a person chose the Bridger. Plan for a family, you can see there that they were paying over seven hundred and forty seven dollars a month for that health insurance. And even with the high deductible health plan, that's a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty five dollar deductible for a family. They were still paying over five hundred dollars a month for that benefit. We were really struggling in attracting and retaining employees given the structure. So the challenges we have and were and still in some ways facing. Um, lack of consistent pay wages caused the city to lag in competitive wages. Uh, the city has suffered reputational damage due to not being able to pay competitive wages. Uh, lagging wages makes it a challenge to recruit and retain employees. And then I think this um, bottom line is current inflation coupled with a very tight labor market. Are major factors in our ability to retain, recruit, and especially um, with those non-competitive wages. So it's really a cumul- cumula- accumulation of factors that we've really had trouble. Um, attracting and retaining um, our employees. So also challenges with health insurance, uh, the three traditional plan designs that we saw earlier. Offered little distinction on the value of the plan for the cost differences. So we did an, I did an analysis on what the participation and the utilization was on those four health insurance plans. Um, the four plans, most designs, um, presented confusion. So a lot of people were confused what the differences were. Between a Madison, the Bridger, and um. The other one was, I don't even remember now. Um, and then some people, as, as I indicated earlier, were paying almost seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to cover families. And we heard that a lot of employees didn't even then cover their families because of the expense or they went without that health insurance. So the city was not competitive with the state of Montana. Um, which led us to not being able to attract and or retain employees. And there are several. Examples of when we would recruit and make offers to employees, and then they would learn about our health insurance package. And realize that seven hundred and fifty dollars a month just was not competitive and. You know, comparatively, it was a four hundred dollar increase over their out-of-pocket expenses should they come to the city. So with the wages, you know, I heard anecdotally, I could handle maybe a cut in wages. But I can't take an additional, additional cut of five thousand dollars a year for health insurance. So as I mentioned, we, we um, looked at the plans, we had four plans, and we consolidated them into two plans. Um, the Madison Plan and the High Deductible Health Plan. Um, with the High Deductible Health Plan, the plan, plan design did not change. So families still have that ten thousand, five hundred and fifty five deductible. Something catastrophic should happen. But what we did was, we took two hundred and fifty dollars a month. For those employees and put those in, put that money into a health savings account. For people who participate in the HDHP. So that means they can build a health savings account. And should they have that high deductible expense, they have that account to draw from. So we're supplementing their premium with that. Um, High Deductible Health Plan, Health Savings Account. Um. And then basically what we did was, we, pretty simple, we just matched the state of Montana's premium structure, we just matched it, so what you see there. Is in twenty twenty-one, the employee paid zero at the city, and then all the way up to seven hundred and thirteen dollars for a comparable plan to the cities. And now our employee onlys are paying thirty dollars, and then um the employee family is paying three hundred and thirty dollars a month. And that's exactly what the state of Montana premiums are for the employees. And obviously what that does is it demonstrates the value of our employees and their families and supports, of course, that recruitment and retention. So on to um current budget, as Director Danielson mentioned, MMI A's health insurance premium rates are increasing nine percent. Um, so we will be recommending, and those are the budget uh budget projections that you saw earlier. Maintaining the current health insurance premium structure, so what we implemented last year with your approval, maintaining that structure. And then having um this, the city employees' current contribution retained, so they themselves, the employees would not. Have or experience an increase in their premiums, so basically, obviously, that means that the city then in our budget would absorb that nine percent increase of premiums. And as Director Danielson mentioned, the budget general fund um impact to that is um. It's nine hundred and three, total nine hundred and three thousand six hundred dollars, general fund of six ninety-six, five ninety. So it's a pretty big lift living in, and then, you know, of course, that permissive mill levy. Um, adjustment to help absorb um that cost, and it really is a recalibration from last year's increase and the recalibration of those premium. Uh, that restructure. Like was mentioned earlier, we weren't sure and didn't know what the exact impact would be with that change of that premium structure. Now we've shored that up, we know what that costs, we know that what that will cost going forward, giving, given that new premium structure that we implemented last year. Um, what I do wanna mention too is, um, we are. Planning to enhance our vision insurance with no budget impact and no increased cost to employees. Our vision insurance is a self-funded plan, um, and the enhancements to that benefit are twofold, one, increasing the frame allowance from a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars. And then also adding a benefit to people who don't have prescriptions, so if they go through to a VSP doctor with an eye exam. Without a prescription, they also enjoy the frame and lens. Um, allowance for blue light glass glasses and sunglasses, so that, those are enhancements we've planned to implement with no budget impact. So moving from benefits in that recommendation on the health insurance premium structure um over to the pay plan. You may recall last fall, uh, we made a commitment to um looking at market-based pay. And we finished now, completed the first phase of that market-based pay plan. Um, so in August of twenty-two, we requested proposals to hire consultants. To conduct a market wage study and evaluate our pay plan structure. In October, we entered into an agreement with CMS Communications Management Services LLC. And then shortly thereafter, we formed a city pay plan committee. I chair that committee, um, the HR Generalist is a member, Director of Public Works. Director of Transportation, Director of Finance, the then interim Director of Parks. And the Chief Building Official all participated and will continue to participate. In the pay plan work that we will continue to do. So the first part of the pay plan, market-based pay plan, was to conduct a wage study, and we've concluded that work. Um, what we did was, we benchmarked about seventy city positions to look at what market pay was for those seventy positions. Um, the benchmark positions represented a cross-section of jobs in all pay ranges across all departments. And then two methodologies were used to gather market data, wage surveys, and then a market study. Uh, the the wage study um actually requested data from employers for specific wages in twenty. Uh, positions, so of those seventy, we did a special survey for twenty positions, went out and looked for data to bring in to see. What that actual data real time was for those positions. The others, we used a market study, and then what that is, is an estimate of market wages using existing data. So there's a lot of data that's already available for salaries and wages, and so we use for the other fifty or so um benchmark positions, existing data. To learn what that market data was. The um survey, so survey results demonstrated that the city of Helena, on average, paid employees about eighty-eight percent of market wages, so in other words, about twelve percent below market wages. What we're recommending is that we move the positions that are currently below eighty-eight percent of market. To eighty-eight percent at step three, so that will level the playing field and put us on. Um, a nice trajectory to start everyone and move toward more competitive wages comparative to the market. So every position would be at step three at eighty-eight percent of market. So what that means is, we have about thirty-one positions that would be affected by this. Um, and in those positions, about forty-two individual employees. When you look at that data and look at the information, it's an average about of about a two um step increase, actually, that should say. Uh, yeah, about a two-step increase, so about a five percent increase per employee. And again, it establishes a foundation of parity for all of our employees, and then we can start looking at everyone across the board equally. But it gets them up at least to that eighty-eight percent, we had some as low as like seventy-two percent of market, so some of those increases will be more significant than others. And that budget impact will be about a hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, cost of living adjustments. So the city of Helena's total cost of living adjustments over the past eight years, as was shown in one of the earlier slides, was thirteen point eight three percent, so that basically averaged one point seven percent a year. Since um the last eight years, so we had three years, as again you saw on that chart, of zero percent increases. Um, as I mentioned, we did make some headway, starting in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, we started pecking away at the cost of living adjustments. Um, but prior to twenty-three. Um, we had an eight point eight increase with an average of one point two six per year, so pretty minimal, and then last year we had a nice bump at five point oh three. Um, just as a way of comparison, Lewis and Clark County. Total cost of living adjustments over the eight years were eighteen point three with only one year of zero increase, so that shows. The compounding effect of not having um consistent pay increases, as you're aware. Um, when you look at the CPI for the mountain area, the last three years, we've had. Um, CPI of two point two and twenty, five point oh and twenty-one, and now this year it jumped up to nine point three, so the CPI is. Greatly increased just in the last year. Uh, the state of Montana, you probably um have heard that. They are giving a four percent increase or a dollar fifty an hour, whichever is greater. So when you interpret that, this compares to a full-time employee. Who earns more than thirty-seven fifty an hour, so more than seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. They will receive the four percent increase. Anyone making less than that, a dollar fifty an hour is higher than a four percent increase, so their minimum will be a four percent increase for the state of Montana. Um, and Lewis and Clark County is proposing a four percent cost of living adjustment. So the recommendation is to provide a four percent cost of living adjustment. To regular, non-temporary, non-unionized city employees, because some of these contracts are currently under negotiation, so um we'll have to see what that looks like. But that will be to our regular matrix and not toward temporaries, as you might remember earlier. This summer, late spring, we um passed a temporary matrix to get us through this season, so this would not include the temporary matrix. Um, the result is supports employees to improve their purchasing power. Um, in a very challenging economic landscape. And then again, it builds foundation to sustain momentum and improving our wages relative to the cost of living. Um, the total budget impact for a four percent is one point oh six, one hundred um. One point oh six million dollars, a little over, um, of the general fund, it's about half that, other funds, it's about half. And then, as mentioned earlier by Director Danielson, each one percent of the cola. Equates to two hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars, and then again, about half of that to the general fund. For cost of living.
Directed. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so. Uh, you mentioned forty-two employees getting an adjustment based on the market, so that your salary survey acknowledged. That was determined, they also then get. The four percent on top of that.
Yes.
So. Uh, as far as union contracts go, are they typically? Are there increases typically tied to the cola?
Depends on the contract, um, Commissioner. So Mayor and Commissioner, so um, for ex- for example, the police contract. Has a provision that says something to the effect, they will get a two percent increase or the city approves cola, whichever is greater. The fire contract right now says that they get the median of the average or the median of the top six cities, and so theirs isn't tied to a cola, it's tied directly to the other cities.
Thank you. You should do.
So, um, we had several positions, uh, new positions recommended, and we're bringing forward three point five FTE requests. Um, one FTE is a budget analyst in the finance department. Um, Director Danielson has agreed to postpone that recruitment until we see what those final budget numbers are. Um, if we're gonna fund that through, you know, our projections through the budget. Um, we have a court officer that we're also bringing forward, this particular position is required under code. When the municipal judge um requests that position, and it's my understanding that has been a request, um, that too has been. Um, approved by the chief to postpone recruitment until after final adoption. We have a facilities maintenance technician that is also um a one point oh FTE, that position would be housed in industrial facilities and public works. Um, and this one is a cost recovery from the enterprise funds. And then the police department evidence clerk, um, it's a point FTE. Um, request, it's currently a point FTE position, so basically it makes it a, you know, full-time one point oh FTE position. Um, it'll address workload and then the retention issues, we've had a lot of turnover in that position, and the nature of the position workload and FTE has been an issue. About the the budget impact of these new FTE requests. For the general fund is a hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred dollars and a budget impact total of a quarter of a million dollars. All I have.
That's right. Uh, so the. Positions that have been recommended for post-employment. Until after final budget adoption, we would. Fully approve, fully fund them, just not hire them until. Uh. After September, so what? What's the criteria for whether to recruit or not, what do you see is? Like, we're postponing it, obviously, for a reason, like. Maybe we might not. Uh, what's the decision tree there, so?
Um. Now, you're certain can speak to this, but I I can address your question to um Mayor and Commissioner Holden, so um. By presenting those positions in the budget, we've currently um. Uh, only funded them in the budget at seventy-five percent, knowing that we were gonna postpone their recruitment. And then after um the, after we get closer to final budget adoption. Um, should we uh make a decision that it's not feasible, then we wouldn't fund one or. Or more of those positions, and they they just wouldn't be posted for recruitment. So um, they would technically just be contingent on final budget adoption before we would recruit for those positions for the. For uh, the two, the two positions, the the court officer and the budget.
Mr. Mayor, and on that court officer. It has to be sworn officers that would NCA with players.
Mayor, Commissioner, yes, uh, we tried to change the law this past session, we're unsuccessful in doing this all.
Better luck next time.
Yeah, so. That's an expensive venture, because. Looking at the court, you know. Anyway. I'm not going there. So um, are you done, uh, Director?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments or questions for? Director McMahon? If not, I know you're looking for some directions right now, right?
Well, Mayor, if you're prepared to do so, and I think Commissioner Shertler is still on board, but. If you're prepared to give direction, I'd start. With probably the most. At least in my opinion, the most important issues. It's not final until it's final.
Right.
Uh, but it helps us start uh to start to prepare for the preliminary budget. And if the commission is. Uh, the first question would be, are you comfortable with? What we've proposed relative to the health insurance and the premium of the mill levy?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I I am comfortable with that, this is, I mean. We knew at the beginning of this budget it was going to, things were going to be tight this year anyway, we're not the only ones in this boat, however. We also have been through the experience of what happens when we lose. Lots and lots of employees for a variety of reasons, and then. Um, struggle to. Get those positions back, and if we're unable to provide good service to to our citizens, then. Um, that's clearly a problem, um. We also are at a disadvantage of competing with the state very directly. Um. They got a four percent raise this year, county's giving a four percent raise. We have to stay competitive, and we did not, we were not competitive for, you know, basically the last decade. Um, I think that hopefully after this year, we will be. On track to be able to be steady, but I really um. I hope this will also be a lesson for future commissions when we're long gone, um. Because there was this, you know, solid decade basically of very few. Colas. And it's, you know, coming back to bite us in the rear, so um. I'm supportive, I think it's really important, we. Have employees who wanna work here and are happy in their jobs, and we can recruit the best people. Um. And and be a good employer for those who wanna leave the state even and come over to our organization, but um. Definitely a good example of why you have to stand up for this sort of thing.
Thank you, I'm not even gonna go near what she said, because she already said it all, I'm not gonna repeat it, I'm in support.
Would it? Uh, we supported the permissive health levy. Uh, as well as the. Market and cola adjustments for employees, um. You know, so thank you uh for sharing that, I do, you know. I do think it's important as we make these decisions on what. We are funding. And what we are essentially increasing on taxpayers. Which. That may be able to, you know, fully justify those um. Those decisions, and and as I said earlier. You know, at least in terms of just mills, it's five point, a five point three percent increase, now, that's not. If I'm understanding it correctly, that's not saying anything about. The uh state assessed market value increases that will be out in June, which. Um, just recently read a story out of Missoula saying that those could increase thirty-seven, those market value assessments. Could increase thirty-seven percent, so. I think we gotta be. Really emotional, yeah, uh, what we're, and and so that gets us to those. I guess really that slide that related to community program funding and and. Uh, they could have to have some tough conversations there, because I. I think it's really important, given the increases that we're gonna be passing on to the public, to citizens. That we're making sure that we're taking care of. Our services and our staff, and you know, the pool is a. Example, it kind of percolates up the top, and you know. If we're not adequately. Funding our own stuff, why are we giving money all out? Out, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner, yeah, I see your hand. I don't know what color is that, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of the permissive health levy and the COLA adjustment. And, uh, with, with regards to the seventy-four thousand dollar deficit, uh, I think we need to find a balance. I'm, I I agree with Commissioner Logan, um, with trying to stabilize from within and kind of take care of our own stuff before we start, uh, giving money away. It's almost like it's like when you, you have a family and you're saving up money for a trip, but you still have bills to pay. In the meantime, you pay those bills first, then you look at the extras, kind of the, the, whether it's a trip or you're a purchase, et cetera. And so I think we need to, uh, look at paying our bills, but, um, I appreciate the presentations tonight and the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So Mayor, um, my question was the permissive mill levy. Uh, the next question is, does, uh, do you agree to include in the preliminary budget adjustment of those outlier positions to bring them up to eighty-eight percent of the market at step three?
I'm okay with that.
I am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the third, the third question, I'm, I'm not, i- i- it's the final one for me, Mayor, uh, and I'm not not sure if you're prepared to make the decision, uh, collectively, uh, I heard some speak to it, some didn't, but that's the level of the four percent COLA. Uh, or if you wanted to hold that off for further discussion, I'm not sure what direction.
I don't think we should hold it off. I think we should just go ahead and do what we need to do, because when I, when I looked at what we had, the, the nonsense we did prior and were barely catching up. I'm in support of it. If we are to consider ourselves the employer of choice, or we're working towards being considered as employer of choice, we need to start now. Yes, my concern. What say you, Commissioners?
Yeah, I think, I think, previously I'd mentioned supporting, yeah, taking care of those raises for, for, so.
Commissioner, we didn't hear you.
I agree.
Okay.
So I think Mayor, uh, Commissioners, I think that kind of frames with, uh, Director Danielson's list, the challenges that we still need to talk through.
Right.
We're gonna bring forward, as you know, on the twenty-fifth and talk about our, uh, continue to talk about what options we have here. If you have any questions or ideas, we'll pursue the homework leading up to that. I think, Director, this gives us an opportunity to really start working on preparing the the preliminary budget for consideration and we can make the other changes as we walk through the discussion, don't you think?
Yes, um, thank you, Manager Burton and, um, Mayor Commission. I just did have just a couple of other questions. I know that there, uh, so that I'm clear that the request to give additional funds away above and beyond what we currently have, is the consensus to either hold on those decisions or to, um, not fund them at all? For example, um,
Human society is part of our responsibility, quite frankly, you know, because, um, they're, they're doing work for the city, so to speak.
And then thirteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, thirteen hundred bucks. So, um, what else?
And then, uh, the M O U with the B I D for the eight thousand dollar.
Mr. Mayor, I would really like to see their budget and presentation first.
Okay.
Um, I agree that I, I think it's important, but I also think that they I'd like to see where their budget's going. They have an executive director who I think is super, super excellent. Um, I wasn't able to make the last B I D meeting, but, um, I was there for the conversation about the assessment piece. Um, I, I, I think that it's worthy and I, I suspect we will have actually quite a bit of public comment probably on the budget that they proposed to us. So I would like to hold off on that until we get that work plan and budget.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you. I think Director Danielson, I really appreciated your comments at the beginning of the community program funding slide that we've never really had a substantive discussion, at least since your time of, of being associated with the city. Um, and given where we're at financially, uh, it sort of forces it, so, uh, don't know if I'm comfortable with what decisions to make at this point, but I think ideally, we, we really should get down to brass tacks.
Mayor, just one other question, and this relates to whether you want it included or not in preliminary budget, and I forgot to mention the three point five requested F T E. And I'm not sure if you're prepared to give direction on that tonight or not. That will be the last question.
I thought we did talk about that.
It, I believe it's presented to us, but I don't know that we
No, you haven't, Mayor. Uh, it's the budget analyst, the police officer, the court officer, which is really required by law. And then the facilities maintenance and then increasing the, uh, evidence clerk in the police department from one half to a full-time position.
Well, if it's required by law, the last thing I wanna do is go against the law. So I agree with the, uh, I mean, if we have to get the police officer and this requiring N C A.
Can I say, put, put clarifying question? I agree with you, but on the budget impact, would that be in addition to that seventy-four thousand dollars? It's already in there.
Yes, right.
I'm good with moving forward.
So, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner?
Yep, yes.
Thank you. Well, we'll set up.
Mayor, um, the last one was the, uh, increase, uh, requested by the Historic Preservation Society of forty thousand.
Waiting for.
Like kind of the additional information as to what the Well.
I'll tell you, I'll tell, this is where I'm at. And the Commissioners and Stewards. Um, yes, it's true. The past ten years, we haven't done a daunting for historical preservation, because there was a tit for tat going on with the Commission. I think to raise it straight up to forty thousand, I'm not in favor. To raise it up, yes, but I'm not sure where, but, um, that's forty thousand, that's, that, that, that's a steep ass from twenty straight to sixty. So, um, can we, can we add another, maybe twenty thousand, fifteen, twenty thousand? I'm okay. But, um, straight to sixty.
I don't, yeah, I'm not, I'm not fully comfortable not fully funding the request. I mean, uh, I think at, at this point. Maybe we'll get there, but but I think, uh, Ms. Turtle made a pretty strong case of, of the workload that the city does benefit from. And then most of the work is inside of the town.
So then why isn't she reporting to the city?
Can't answer that.
Okay, and that's where we've always come to the same conclusion. If, if you're doing most of our work, we should know what's going on. You should be reporting to us, it senses our work. But you're reporting to the county for our work. That's where that, you know, anyway. But, uh, yes.
Sorry, um, one more. It was the additional eighty thousand for the pool.
No, no, but we're still on this one.
Okay.
Commissioner, where are you?
Uh, I think that we, it's important that we I think we should have been funding our, our share. Um, I would like to get to the sixty, so we actually are funding our full share, but I also understand that there are other considerations, so if we, I would like to move in the direction of increase, yes, let's increase. Do we have to decide it? Specific dollar amount today, is that my question?
We're on it. Let's not kick the can. Let's just do something about it. Commissioner Shirley, where are you?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, it, obviously historic preservation's absolutely important. Um, you know, uh, our history, the last couple of decades, we've knocked down some really wonderful buildings that had a lot of character and we wish we were, they were still around and, um, like you said too, that we've kind of kicked the can down the road and not funded this position. Um, I'm in favor of, of, um, of historic preservation and, uh, paying our fair share. I got a question for Director Danielson. How much is the county paying into this, uh, position?
Thank you, Mayor and, um, Commission. So their proposed budget for that office is a hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, their request was for half of that office's budget, proposed budget.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with, you know, if, if we don't have consensus on like a number, I'm, I'm good. I, I think we need to increase our amount. Um, uh, I like the amount of sixty, I'm good with that, but if we don't have consensus, I'm happy to just say that I'm willing to increase if that works for tonight.
We got consensus there. Got it?
Um, Mayor, no, I don't. Is there a dollar amount you can give?
Yeah, we said, well, sixty then.
Sixty, thank you.
Let's do sixty.
Thank you.
And then I guess on the P G T V, do we have a timeline as to if, I, I just, I, I struggle and we had this conversation like, well, actually, we didn't have this conversation. We started having this conversation. I'm pretty sure it was my first year, so like three and a half years ago. And sometimes it feels, um, and it's really important work. It's a really important service that's provided to the community. I am not at all an advocate of eliminating that. However, I am an advocate of where we can experience some savings because we have modernized and, and can we eliminate some of these duplicative systems that are happening right now? Um, and I, so if we can get to a place where we can say we could save a hundred thousand dollars because we have all new equipment that has H G T V is more than welcome to use to, you know, stream these meetings and everything else, like that would be, I think, a, a benefit to the public.
Okay, let me ask a question on this. Because of the new equipment, has it lessened the work? Because if it didn't, I mean, we just changed.
Well, I've deferred it, Danae, but from my understanding.
She put you on the hot seat.
Sorry, Danae.
She goes for the mic.
And if we need to come back to this, I mean.
Mayor, Commissioner, if I may.
Yes.
You know, we're in the process or we're within the timeframe where we need to be talking about the renewal of the contract. If we can do a little, uh, homework and report back to the commission, uh, that'd be my recommendation.
You're off the seat, Danae.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, are you done?
Our direction, thank you. And that is all I have on this particular topic.
I guess we'll.
You got more topics?
Yeah, we have a whole nother presentation then.
Well, you will stay here alone.
But I will give you that as quickly as I can.
Go ahead.
Are we ready for the next, uh, did you wanna take a public comment on this topic or we have to, can we just?
Yes, uh, are there, are there any comments from the public? Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised and no written public comment.
Okay, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Um, is it helpful if I can do my, or can I be very?
You can just come up.
Would you introduce yourself?
It does sound like this is getting a little tight, I appreciate the, the position of, you know, possibly having to make cuts, but, um, real quick, Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Joel Harris, I'm the director, uh, race director of the Health Sun Run. One of these items I wanted to think about. Um, thank you, by the way, for supporting us for a number of years, uh, and doing the starting at least to me, that was fun for a few years. Um, hopefully I can just give you a couple of good reasons, since this preliminary budget conversation is happening for why you might consider keeping the center up. Um, so just a little background, I'll keep this very brief, uh, since twenty fifteen, we call it eight, hello, the sun runs. Um, each year, the hell in a sun run raises money for a solar panels project on a public or a nonprofit building. We've built approximately two hundred kilowatts capacity with five different projects, um, soon to be two hundred and sixty kilowatts over six projects once we finish our uh, Brian Elementary School project here this, yeah, here. Um, we, we do realize that the structure across us for community, uh, organizations making sort of assets changing, um, just wanted to get our two cents in here, um. One point I would like to raise would be, given the, the city's twenty twenty hundred percent renewable pledge resolution. Um, we feel this partnership continuing makes sense in that, uh, respect. Um, I hope everyone knows that the two organizations that plan this, not sleeping giant citizens council, Helen and vigilante runners, we don't benefit from these events. We, we push all the money forward to the school district that's partnered with for the last few years. And, uh, there are a couple, you know, normal event costs. You know, timing, company pay for the time and everything, but, uh, almost a hundred percent of it just goes straight to the partner that we work with. Um, another point to, you know, consider in, in considering, uh, keeping this on the budget is, uh, you know, this highlighting the partnership we've had with the school district for the last few years, um. You know, this is sort of a unique opportunity for the city to support both the schools, um, schools saving costs, uh, in addition to renewable energy benefits, um, but also renewable energy, so kind of a, a good bang for your bucks sort of thing to have in the budget. Um, yes, that's all I have. We just wanted to put our two cents in and hope you consider keeping on the summer.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on mine.
Okay, Director Danielson, you have ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, uh, wanted to
Well, just kidding, I'm just kidding.
No, I, I'll get them. I wanted to have the opportunity to also present, um, some of our administrative, um, funds that, um, are, uh, kind of under the radar, but they, um, are managed by finance. Um, I just, uh, one of the, uh, the first ones, um, we have the loan program fund, Geo Bonds, lighting districts, our TIPS district funds, sidewalk fund, copier revolving fund and some of our other internal service funds. So I'll start with the first one, um, which is our, uh, loan repayment fund. This particular fund is used to, um, uh, for the commission to, uh, fund our solar loan program. That's the program where, um, someone can apply it to a twelve thousand dollar loan for solars. Um, it's a zero percent interest. Um, I think they pay it back in ten years. Um, I don't have any of the other criteria, but I can get that for you, um, at a later date. Um, when I reconcile this fund, um, because there is another, uh, long-term promissory note also being housed in this particular fund, um, that that had to be reconciled against what the solar program repayments have been back into the fund and I have about uh, seventy-two thousand dollars of funding for the solar program currently that could potentially be used for fiscal twenty-four. I will let you know that I, when I last spoke to the community development program, they had, um, over twelve people on the waiting list, um, to participate in this program. So that would require additional funding if the, the commission chose to, to, to fund anymore in this program. Um, any other questions, any questions on this particular fund? The next one is our, uh, uh, Geo Bond Fund. This is what, uh, Commissioner The next one is our uh uh Geo Bond Fund, this is what Commissioner uh. Logan um referred to about the mill that's associated with that, about seven mills um associated with that to raise every year. We have a balance of about two point six uh million dollars in there. Our annual payments are around five hundred and sixty thousand and we levy only enough to pay for the annual payment. Um, our uh last payment will be in January one of twenty twenty eight. Um, we will, we do have a re- uh required reserve that we keep in that, we're required by the bond tenants to keep a. One-year payment which can then be used for the final payment on the loan in twenty twenty eight. Next slide. And we have our lighting districts, and so each year we um do a calculation on. Um, the assessment for all of our lighting districts, there's currently fifty four lighting districts in the city that um we administer. Um, we're required, uh, well, we're not required, but we do maintain about a fifty percent. Uh, cash reserve for the lighting districts for um infrastructure replacement process needed. Um, and that's calculated by fund, by statute, every lighting district is required to have a self-domicent set of accounts. But for budgeting and for annual reporting purposes, we do roll them up into. Just one, one fund so that, yeah, you don't have to move through fifty four funds, we call them sub-funds with. We also have our tip districts, and so these um districts are specifically set up as urban renewal districts. We have the railroad tip district, the downtown tip district and our uh Capitol Hill tip district. Um, these are uh funded by tax incentive financing and the, um, I usually will just estimate. You know, uh, appropriations, but um they can be adjusted throughout the year depending upon the applications that go. To uh the advisory boards for use of those funds, and then it then comes to the commission for final approval. Um, right now, um, as of today, I I'm expecting an estimated cash balance in a railroad. Um, at five hundred and ninety four thousand, there's a cash balance um that I'm expecting in the downtown is two hundred and sixty five thousand. And in the Capitol Hill, an estimated cash balance of three hundred and seventeen thousand. I will indicate that um the commission passed um the resolution where ten percent of the tax dollars. That are um collected in those funds are dedicated for affordable housing, and as of. Today, none of those earmarked funds have been used for affordable housing.
Nice question.
Yes.
On, I I, what it, what, do we know what the contribution? Estimate is for the railroad tip district that I feel it just seems a lot higher than what we've seen before, so I'm just surprised by that.
Um, I, I can't, let me just.
And if you want.
Packet, I estimated, I have an actual budget document in there, that I estimated the.
It looks. Oh, it looks like three hundred and twenty five.
Project for those, yeah, so for the railroad, I'm projecting about three hundred and twenty five thousand. And for downtown, about three hundred and eighteen thousand. And Capitol Hill, which is a little bit harder for me because of the night, because they have had all that new construction. I just had a real low conservative estimate of two hundred and nine thousand dollars for tax earnings dollars for those.
So really briefly, Mister Mayor, on the Capitol Hill one, since. Benefits is gonna be a pretty significant building, but it. It's tax exempt. Which means it's.
We don't get any from the finance.
Cool.
Well, I, you know, just for future reference, um, when we were talking to Bond Council about that. The the impact of that, um, it was a year or more, it was more than a year ago. Um, there is a potential for the city to um. To enter into an agreement, um, you know, a development agreement that they would pay cash and move of taxes. Um, that was not the case in this circumstance, but for future uh. You know, information when the city can certainly negotiate something like that. With development of a nonprofit entity that's coming into attention in the district.
I mean, not that I don't think that's going to be a great facility, but I mean, it's.
They they do um take up a substantial amount of property within just the the mall district.
Yeah.
Um, of course, the district does extend out to where the housing district and north and south and east and west of of that area too that. Could potentially, you know, request funds from that, um, we had originally. Uh, well, or you're, you know, about some of the development using some of the funds for that development that that never came to fruition. Currently, there's no advisory board for that tip district, and so it's solely up to the commission to make decisions and recommendations, but. Um, something that we're uh discussing to, you know, formulate an advisory board to want to give to the campus group going forward.
Yeah, okay.
Um, next slide. Sidewalk, so let's talk about sidewalks, um, right now. We have um recommended funding from cash, general cash reserves of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, to be earmarked toward the sidewalk program, that's kind of what they've historically funded over the last couple of years. Um, the commission has certainly uh dedicate more funds to that if they desire. Um, but currently, we have earmarked and a proposed hundred and fifty thousand. I will tell you that I spoke with um Director Knopki um before this meeting, and I'm trying to find, he currently has. As of the end of today, ninety four applicants for sidewalks. Um, approximately, it's approximately five thousand dollars per project. So potential uh project funding could, you know, be about four, half a million dollars. Um, a year for sidewalks, so just, just, I wanted to give that to bit of information that he shared with me.
And it's been open twenty four hours.
Yes.
Pardon me?
It's been open twenty four hours.
Yes, and so, yeah, it just opened up and they already have ninety four applicants. Could have grown since then, um, I talked to him about three o'clock this afternoon. Um, we have the, a small copier revolving fund, um, it is purely a faster fund. Those that participate in the program pay into it and then they they get their their. Your copier services in their contracts, and then if they need to replace a copier, there's a little bit of uh. Uh, mechanism in there to replace their copier lens to lease ends to um increase their technology inside. The next fund is our property and light, there was an insurance fund, um. After doing that, premium payments are going to be about one point three million. This covers building vehicles liability and fidelity insurance. Um, estimating liability to go up about five point nine percent, the building twenty one percent and vehicle seventeen point nine percent. Um, each year, we go through and look at our inventory and update uh estimated values, and so. Um, this won't be finalized until I, you know, get the information from M M A, but these are um good estimates, I think, of what. Uh, we'll have going into fiscal twenty four, but we'll show that before we have final budget budget evaluation. And then we have the benefit uh funds, and we spoke a lot about that already, so I won't go into. Um, a lot of detail on that, but uh, um, I just shared some of the cash balances that we have. Um, one of the issues that we're having um with the health insurance fund and that we may uh want to propose. Is that um right now we're collecting in arrears for health insurance from employees and retirees and those others that. That participate in our health insurance, um, that's left us with um a really small. Um, and and sometimes throughout the year, a negative cash balance in this fund. Um, and so I talked to Director McMahon about this, um, and there may be, uh, we may come and ask, um. Or instead of collecting in arrears, collecting in advance, so that we don't have the cash flow problems in the fund. Um, it's technically they're borrowing from other funds if they have major cash flow throughout the year. But they are required at the end of this, they really have a positive cash balance. Um, and so that that's presented some challenges with the increase in health insurance and hoping. That um it'll resolve itself um with with some time on this new program, but uh. We may want to propose that we we change the funding to. But upfront instead of in in arrears, and that would have an impact on voice, um, they would have to catch up. On premiums and may, you know, have to pay a double premium, you know, maybe in the the months that we have a third paycheck or something. We've talked about that in the past, but um, no decisions have been made on that, we haven't really had a sit down with the city manager on that for that proposal, but. Just wanted to mention the cash flow issue on that, and so with that, I have one minute left and I'm open for questions.
I have a question that will last for two minutes, so what do we do?
Question, um, so. So we have pretty decent picture of everything. Almost, except. The, what what's the impact, the assessed market values on revenue? I mean, I mean, obviously, it's unknown, but when you get those in. Those figures, what then happens to the budget?
So, Mayor Commissioners, uh, we'll go forward with the preliminary budget. But your final budget will not be adopted until we have those actual numbers, so if. There's a reason for the commission to adjust after we receive the assessed valuation, you have the opportunity to do so in August.
Is that should significantly increase the revenues, right?
Potential's there, um, I don't have an answer.
Right.
But the potential's there.
Okay.
Um, and Mayor and Commissioner Logan, um, I did build in and estimate an increase for that. Uh, however, we just, I just, I don't know, I looked at historical. Um, trends, I know that we've annexed property into the city, I know that the the. The values of homes go up, but it's also money, you know, based on their taxable values as well, so. Um, we'll see what, it's not necessarily the market, it's not the market value that we. Um, assess the mills on, it's the taxable values.
Right, right, so that. Yeah.
Mayor Commissioners, you'd have time to adjust if the numbers.
And uh allowing, allows.
I guess, on that one last turn, could we keep maybe a running list of the things that were like. Maybe we find, maybe we don't, and if we decide no, put that over here so that if we do for some reason have some sort of. Greater increase that then we can come back and talk about those.
Yes, that's exactly the product that will come out of this meeting today.
Okay. Well. Do you have any directions, Mister Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Alan Burke, do we have anybody online?
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Do you have any in the house? So, um. Well, I don't have to gather any final comments from Commissioners, if not, this means.